7:15 and happy tax day, everybody. You know, I would like to call the Monday, May 17th, 7:15 public hearing to order. In accordance with Governor Charles D. Baker, March 10th, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, GL 30A 20, the Quincy City Council will be convening these public hearings via remote conferencing services that will air on Quincy Access Television, QA TV, our friends, channel QA TV 9, Government Access. So this public hearing is on order, 2021-046 utility grant location, Mass Electric Quarry Street. At this point, I'd like to ask anyone wishing to speak in favor or opposition to use the raise hand feature. When you're called upon, please state your name and address. With this, no written correspondence have been received by the clerk of committees at this time. So anybody who would like to speak in favor or against, please. Is there anybody out there for this? And I'm not controlling this, so is there anybody in favor or against? Okay.
John Rotafeld would like to speak.
John, John, John's on the, John's on the line. Go ahead, John. John.
I mute myself.
Yep.
John Rotafeld, 62 Grandwall Road, Quincy, Mass. Hey, with my cat, Rasta, she's sick. This might be her last meeting, so I just wanted to speak on this. Might be my last public appearance with my poor cat. But I just wanted to make this point out. The public gets a chance right now. I get to speak on like a utility poll, whether I want it to be put up, whether it doesn't want to be put up. The main point is, most of the time, they have to be put up, no matter what the people say, because for the infrastructure that needs to get done in the city. So I kind of wanted to just use my privilege to speak right now, just to let the city council know that what I do want to speak about before you approve things are large appropriations over a million dollars. And at last week's meeting, you guys approved 100 million, 40 million.
John, 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 I'm going to interrupt you. This is about, not about what was going on. This is about the utility grant.
But it all, it all, it all ties together. It's all one giant thing.
John, I need you to speak.
It's about either we're wasting our time having us speak on this, because no one usually does speak. I can't see how this is more important than 100 million dollars.
John, I understand what you're saying. John, I understand what you're saying, but this is about the utility grant location of Mass Electric Quarry Street. Do you have something to say about that other than?
I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of this one on, on Quarry Street, because we need it for the hundreds of new units that we put in that region. We need to make sure that we have enough power for the people that were living there for development. We definitely need to update our grid in the city of Quincy. So I, I, I think National Grid does a good job in the city, and I'm in favor of this. Thank you.
John, thank you as always. Your, your, you know, your public, your, your public opinion, it does, does matter. But thank you for speaking on this. Is there anybody else who would like to speak on the grant of location on Quarry Street? Anybody against? Okay. That being said, seeing no further public comment, I'd like to close the public hearing at 7:19 and we'll be back in one minute for the next public hearing. Thank you very much. Trying to get my dinner down. I would like to call the Monday, May 17th, 7:20 public hearing order to order. And again, we already went through the, the accordance to Governor Charles D. Baker, March 10th, 2020, order suspending provisions of the open meeting law, GL 30A. The Quincy City Council will be convening these public hearings via remote conferencing services that will air on Quincy Access Television, QA TV channel, QA TV 9, Government Access, our friends. Thank you. This public hearing is on order, 2021-047, grant of location, Mass Electric, McConville Way and Parking Way. So at this point, I'd like to ask anyone wishing to speak in favor or opposition to use the raise the hand feature. When you are called upon, please state your name and address. Is there anybody? And again, no written correspondences have been received by the clerk of committees for this item. So is anybody, anybody would like to speak in favor or against? And again, is anybody raising their hand? I'm going to take a peek. All righty, let's see. I'm going to just do, anybody there?
I don't see any hands raised.
No hands raised. So seeing no further public comment, I'd like to close this public hearing at 7:22 and we'll be back at 7:25 for the next public hearing. Thank you. All right, that's too funny. I'd like to call to order the Monday, May 17th, 7:25 PM, public hearing to order. In accordance with, again, Charles D. Baker, March 10th, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, GL 30A 20, the Quincy City Council will be convening these public hearings via remote conferencing services that will air on Quincy Access TV, QA TV channel, QA TV 9, Government Access, again, our friends. The, this public hearing is on order, 2021-048, utility grant of location, Mass Electric, Verizon, 202 Copeland Street. At this point, I'd like to ask anyone wishing to speak in favor or opposition to use the raise hand feature. When you are called upon, please state your name and address. And before that, no written correspondences have been received by the clerk of committees for this item. So is there anybody in favor or against raising their hand? Anybody looking to speak? In favor?
Joanne Caneley.
I'm sorry?
Joanne Caneley.
Joanne Caneley. Joanne.
Hi.
Hi, Joanne.
So I'm the engineer who worked on the job for National Grid. So if there are any concerns or anything, I can try and field them. But basically, we were in March originally, but it needed to be relocated because they found a sewer manhole. So it just needs to be moved.
All right. Joanne, thank, thank you for piping in. So is there anybody, again, who would like to speak against or for this grant of location? So going once, going twice, going three times. So that being said, seeing no further public comment, I'd like to close the public hearing at 7:27. And I still didn't beat my record, so thank you so much. And we'll be going to the 7:30, the 7:30 council meeting right on time. Thank you.
So good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Monday, May 17th, regularly scheduled council meeting. Mr. Assistant Clerk, can you call the role, please?
Counselor Donico.
Present.
Counselor Kane.
Present.
Counselor DeBona.
Present.
Counselor Harris.
Present.
Counselor Mahoney.
Present.
Counselor McCarthy.
Present.
Counselor Palmucci.
Present.
Counselor Phelan.
Present.
President Liang.
Present. Thank you. We can all just make sure to mute ourselves for a moment of silence in honor of all the women and men currently serving both here and abroad, as well as keeping in mind all the frontline workers still fighting the pandemic. Thank you so much. Mr. Assistant Clerk, could you read the open meeting law, please? Let me just unmute you. Sorry, one moment.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived, by those present and are deemed knowledgeable and permissible.
Thank you. And in accordance with Governor Charles D. Baker's March 10th, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, chapter 30A, section 20, the Quincy City Council is holding this council meeting via remote video conferencing services and is being aired on Quincy Access Television, QA TV, channel QA TV 9, Government Access. Mr. Assistant Clerk, first item on the agenda, please.
First item is number one, 2021-049 appropriation, fiscal 2022 general fund budget.
Thank you so much, Counselor McCarthy.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to move it into finance, President Liang. And on the motion, I'll go back to you for proper introductions of our, of our mayor who's coming on to talk about it.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. So we do have a motion to move this into Finance Committee, as we usually do every year with this budget. And per usual, every year as well, we always have our mayor coming and introducing the budget to all of us as a body, and I'm excited to see him on tonight. So good evening, Mayor. Thank you for joining us.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the city council. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you a little bit about our fiscal 2022 fiscal budget. And first of all, I'd like to just like to say thank you. This has been an extraordinary year, more than a year, 14 months now. And this body has been very supportive and helpful as the city has migrated through this difficult time. I would like to also add to that my chief of staff, Chris Walker. Been incredible on this for me over the last year, the department heads, the department managers, city employees. Nobody forgot what their mission was, whatever the department may have been. And I think that we fared very well because we worked very well together. People were creative. People worked extremely hard. So the citizens of the city were well served. And I want to thank all those department heads, managers, and city employees over this past 14 months. I'd also like to just publicly express my gratitude to Governor Baker and Lieutenant Governor Toledo for the amazing partnership we've had throughout, as we might get it through this, this process as well. So, you know, as, as we went through this past year, this body made some adjustments this past fall when we set in the tax rate. We asked all the departments to tighten the belts and we actually shaved some stuff off to get through the year, because we weren't sure in the midst of the pandemic where we would be with the number of our local receipts and what would be with state aid, how much of a hole in the economy this pandemic would leave. Now fortunately, you know, the federal government has stepped in, the state has stepped in. Every, every level of government is working extremely hard and working together so that we really haven't missed a beat in delivering any service here in the city of Quincy. This year's budget is 346.6 million. It's an increase of 1.7, I'm sorry, 1.9% from the original fiscal 21. Remember, the original fiscal 21, then we made some adjustments, so we're going back to the, what would be the original fiscal budget. So it's a net increase of 6.4 million. And I know you'll be discussing in Finance Committee, the pension obligation bonds that we put before you. And that has allowed us in this budget to create some very big savings, allowing us to deal with some of the challenges we have. And that also includes a reserve appropriation for, we're in the midst of bargaining with all city unions. Every one of them were up city side last June and school side, some of them last June, some of them last August and September. So every contract is up and we're in discussions with various unions on increases. So we're putting together a reserve on the side so we can deal with that going forward. And the biggest increase as far as departments go is the Quincy Public Schools. That's a 2.8%, 3.1 million, which is a straight increase in chapter 70 that we're receiving from the state. Just some highlights on this, you know, and I mentioned you'd be going in the committee to talk about this, but for those folks that may be watching this at home, I bet some of them will be watching the Bruins instead. But we have an unfunded liability with our pension system. That's been there a long time, and that continues to be noted in any audit or any look at the city's books. It's not unusual. Many cities and towns have that same challenge. We are under a schedule under state law to fully fund that by a certain date and time. We started looking in the fall with these historic low interest rates to look at whether it made some sense to bond this obligation, this unfunded liability, if you will, and to deal with it, to bring the numbers down. So rather than, rather than going up each and every year significantly, for example, July 1st would be going up above 4 million in the bill for the retirement board, will be going down dramatically. But I guess, again, I'll leave those details for those committee discussions when I'm in this with Finance Department will be before you to discuss that. We've also directed some of the savings from that to the stabilization fund, as you know, which we tapped to help us get us through this year. I think it's important we get back to rebuilding that as well. And that service remains within that target at 6%, 6% to 7.5%. Now, some of the other highlights, you know, I mentioned the, the chapter 70 money increase by 3.1, unrestricted local aid is also up. I want to thank Speaker Mariano, Senator Keenan, Representatives Ayers, Chan, and Hunt. They've always been very supportive of local aid. So between the House Senate and the governor's proposal, every one of them proposed increases for cities and towns. As you know, this is an important piece of, of, you know, how we fund our budget each and every year. So we're, we're grateful for their continued work. And then the American Rescue Plan allows for revenue offsets. So this is an area where we're still looking at the detail of the interpretation of some of this. But I want to thank Congressman Lynch, who's been, we've talked really weekly on this. Certainly Senator Warren and Senator Mackey have also had discussions with them, and we're grateful for their work in providing these funds. And it's right off the bat, two major things we should know. One is it can't be used to reduce taxes. It can be used to fill those areas where we'd normally get, so those receipts we wouldn't be receiving that we normally would. For example, the hotel tax, this would be allowed to backfill those areas. So we'll continue to keep you informed again in that area. Budgetarian revenue highlights, this, this year is the, the Friends Brook Golf Course, the lease is up. And I know we've had some discussions directly with, with the Wethery Council and Kane about this, and we're working with the folks up to have a smooth transition. But essentially, the revenue from the course should offset expenses with the course. I'm sure we'll be back to this body at some point with Counselor Kane to look at a longer term plan on how we deal with upgrades. And for example, the clubhouse does not meet the ADA requirements and so forth. So there'll be other capital needs down the road we've got in the Friends Brook. But we think it's a great opportunity to continue to provide great open space, protect open space, but also some great recreational opportunities. Restoration of some of the other items that we reduced because of the pandemic, the annual contribution to the OPEB, and as I mentioned, the stabilization fund. We're putting back to where we were on celebrations. As you know, the Recreation Department, we cut significantly and we're reusing the CARES Act monies for that last year. That goes back again. And then the capital line for purchase of vehicles, largely those of police cruisers when we do that. We did not, police cruisers did not fall under the CARES Act or under the Town and American Recovery Plan for replacement. So we'll be looking to that line to help us upgrade as we do every year. Remember, cruisers run 24/7. They really don't shut off. And I know Madam President was particularly interested, as was the body, in us coming up with the Language of Community Access Plan, and that is included in this budget as well. Those are the highlights. I'd like to make a couple of other comments if I could before I open it up with questions. I mentioned thanking the department heads. I want to do a particular shout out to Deb Cofflin and thank her for her years of service as the Madam Treasurer Collector for our department. Deb came from Gillette Finance, did a great job for us. And of course, as you know, we've replaced Deb with Fidou. Fidou was no stranger to the city, being right next door, great resume, and she's doing a marvelous job to date. Also want to, again, thank Ruth Jones, she left us in January, and we wish her well in her retirement. She was truly dedicated in everything she did for the Health Department over the years, particularly as Commissioner. And I want to congratulate Marley Casely, who has been appointed the new Public Health Commissioner. He's been an employee with the Health Department, and we look forward to many years of his service as well. And again, my gratitude to all of our, our departments, the incredible work done. You think back, 14 months ago, there was no playbook for this. Each and every department had stepped up, do what they needed to do to deliver the services, and I'm certainly grateful for that. We never shut down as a city. I appreciate the council's support on that. In fact, we got much better bids last year for roads because other committees decided to shut everything down. We did not. We kept people employed, we kept people working, and I'm certainly proud of that. So I think these are times when the people of the city, the people in general, expect government to work for them. And I think, you know, we can always look back and be critical of particularly areas, but overall, I'm grateful for my colleagues at every level of government. I think we've responded well, we dealt with this issue as best we could, and that certainly feels like we're turning the corner, restrictions are being lifted, the weather's getting better, certainly looking forward to the public events coming up. So with that, Madam President, members of the council, be happy to answer any questions. I look forward to whatever you need, we'll provide in Finance Committee from our various departments of my office. So with that, thank you.
Thank you so much, Mayor. And hopefully this will be the second and last budget hearing we'll have over in a virtual space. But I appreciate you, just as it was last year, taking the time to join us in a virtual space, you know, given what's going on. So thank you so much for that and for your presentation. I'm just going to make sure, so that I do capture my colleagues, just turn my view back over to Gallery View. For those who need to do that, you can go in the top right-hand corner of your screen, go to View and go to Gallery View as well. And the interim, the mayor will continue to be spotlighted on your screen if you prefer that, just so that we can make sure to see him as well as my colleagues ask questions. Let me just flip back over to Gallery View. And I do see that one of my colleagues, this is Henrys, Counselor Palmucci.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
I just wanted to start off by commending you and the leadership you've shown on behalf of the city over the last year. I think you've done an incredible job. Your team did an incredible job. And as you said, we're, we're turning the corner, we're coming out of it in a good place where some folks haven't been. You know, you saw some communities that had to do massive layoffs, but we've had, not had those problems. And I think a big part of that is attributable to your leadership. So thank you for that. The only thing I wanted to say is it's more of a statement than a question. By all means, you can respond to it if you want, and I won't be offended if you don't. But I was very disappointed, I got, we got a copy of the budget earlier today. I was very disappointed that the Department of Social Justice and Equity wasn't included in the budget. And I know you put in a position in the mayor's office, but what we had passed on the council eight to one was, was a department. And we felt that it was important to have it as a department to elevate the issues that we were seeking to have addressed. We did it, we passed the ordinance, and it was done in the same fashion that the TPAL Department and the Natural Resources and the Public Buildings Departments were all created. It was an ordinance, came in, was voted, approved, and it made it in the next year's budget. The only difference is this department originated in the, in the council and that you didn't, you don't support it, which is fine. We disagree. We've disagreed on a lot of things over the years. We disagree on the subject, you have your opinion, the council has another. And I think it's certainly within your authority to zero fund the department if you wanted to, to, to put zero down, you don't think it's a priority, well within your authority. But the, I feel as though you cannot, or I believe as though you cannot just ignore the fact that the council created a department. If you wanted to zero fund it, I would suggest the best mechanism to do that is to put it in as a department, same as everything else in your budget, every other department, and zero fund that. It was lawfully established under the charter, and I, I sit here in disbelief, I really do, that it, that it wasn't included. And I think back to, you know, I've been on the council for a while. This body approves nearly all of the priorities that you expressed to it, with the exception of perhaps last week. I can't think of a, a single major priority that you've brought to this board that we didn't support. And this is one of only two times that I'm aware of that we've brought you a policy and a vision that, that we're interested in pursuing on behalf of the city, that we, that we believe in. And again, I respect that your, your opinion is different from ours, but it feels as though you're entirely dismissing what we are trying to do, that you're entirely dismissing our, our opinion on this. And, you know, this issue is important to many residents. It's important to the members of this body who supported it and who worked on these issues, you know, for the, for the better part of the last year and a half. And quite frankly, I'm just, I'm disappointed in this. I'm disappointed in you, Mr. Mayor, respectfully, because I expect better of you, because I know that you're a caring and considerate person. I've seen that, I've seen that both publicly and privately, and I truly believe that you are a very caring and considerate person. And I, I feel as though this approach to the way in which you didn't include this in the budget lacks your usual thoughtfulness, that you, that you take care in showing to opponents, people with different views, as well as the people who share your view. And I thought of all day of how do I express this, right? Or do I object to the budget? Do I move for a, for a unfavorable opinion, send it back to you? And I felt, I thought about it, and I just thought, I felt as though all of those things were disrespectful, disrespectful to you personally and disrespectful to the office of the mayor appearing at the city council. And there are some cities that, that's the kind of relationship the mayor has with city councilors, and, and the two parts of government don't function as cohesively as ours do. So I didn't, and those, those maneuvers didn't capture how I felt. So I thought I'd just tell you, and I'd just be frank and honest with you. I've enjoyed a good working relationship with you over the years, I think this body has as well, and I'm, I'm just disappointed. So as I said, you can comment or not comment. If you don't comment, that's fine, I don't take it as you ignoring me. I just, I felt as though that was important to me to get off my chest, and I think it's important for folks to hear that we're still fighting for this as we move forward. So thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Mayor, did you have anything you'd like to say before I move on to see if anybody else would like to speak?
I certainly appreciate Counsel Palmucci's sentiments. We do have a disagreement on this as a priority. I felt by putting the position in showed at least symbolically that I appreciate that opinion, that, that thought. I did give it a lot of thought over time, and, and I think that we have a pretty amazing city in so many ways. And this may not be really the, the time to discuss some of those things, but I, I think we have, you get down through every department in our city, it's extremely responsive to a very diverse community that we have. I think a lot of the things that are happening in our community, happening organically. I mean, you, you think about Fidou, the first really Asian-American department head, you know, we have Marley Casely, who's the first, I guess Albanian-American, you know, so we're seeing a reflection more and more in the city employees of what our population is. And I, I always go back to the schools and go back to the police, because those are the two most visible, I think, that the public deal with on a regular basis. And I tell you, we get, we get dozens of different languages spoken in our schools that come from all over the world, and every family is treated with class, with dignity, with respect, and we do an awful lot. So I certainly appreciate Counsel's Palmucci's. Appreciate, uh, Counsel's, uh, Palmoche's comments. I appreciate the, the council's wishes. Uh, I, I'm just not there yet, and, and maybe we'll get there. And as you know, I've just, uh, finalized or just about to finalize the commission we're appointing. And one of the tasks I've asked that commission to look at, uh, whether we need this, uh, department or not, position or not, however you want to describe it. Uh, and, and then we'll, we'll revisit it at some point. Um, so with that, I think I've said enough. I appreciate again your comments, and I certainly take them very seriously.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, any other questions or comments from my colleagues? Counselor Mahoney?
Thank you, Madam President, and, um, thank you, um, Mayor Koch for bringing the budget to us tonight. I did have a question in regards to the $475 million bond that has not actually been discussed in finance that's been weaved into this budget. And I think you touched upon it, but we didn't get your presentation prior to the meeting. We did get the budget, um, it's very large, so it was, um, took forever for me to open. I wasn't able to really review it before the meeting, but could you explain, um, there's, so there's no. I guess what I'm trying to understand is it's, you know, you're using $475 million bond, and, um, we would be normally putting. I guess you're bonding it out, but you, you said there were some savings that you're rolling into other areas. Could you explain that to me, please? In your presentation?
Sure, and I, I know we'll get into it in greater detail in, in Finance Committee, but essentially, um. Essentially, we have an unfunded liability, and the unfunded liability right now is on one side of the ledger. We're dealing with it. Uh, and let me back up. Every year when we go to put the budget together, the first two things I look at, uh, is, is the cost of increase in healthcare. And the cost of increase in the retirement. We start with those two, and they usually are up every year, and then we go from there as we start to break up the pie. Now, a number of, um, states and communities are looking at the same, uh, proposals we are. So it basically takes it.
You told me how many in Massachusetts have done it, just out of curiosity?
A number of years ago Worcester's done it, Brockton's done it, Brockton's looking to do it again, uh, City of Ameswray's looking at it, uh, there's actually states, I think it's Arizona. Uh, this, the Plymouth County's looking at it. There's, there's a lot of examples, and I'm sure once they get into the details in committee. Uh, much of that, uh, information can be provided, but essentially, uh, this year's budget has 32 million on it for the retirement side. July 1, that would be going up by 4 million. And each year going forward until we hit that schedule of full payment. Which Sue O'Connor can correct me if I'm wrong, I think it's 2037, uh, could still be changed by the state, but. We, we have to fully fund that system by that time. So, um, again, that could change the schedule, but the reality is the numbers keep going up dramatically. Uh, this essentially takes advantage of historically low interest rates, uh, and fully funds the system. And thereby saving X amount each and every year. So rather than going up by the 4 million, you take the debt service, that creates the savings. The first year is the bitter, bitter, bigger savings, and then each and every year going out, it's consistent going forward what that number is. So when we're planning our budgets. Uh, it's, it's much easier for us, uh, and certainly, uh, healthier for us, uh, with such a program passed.
So what's the savings for, um, the taxpayers if we were to do something like this?
Again, they'll get into the details. I think the first year is about 15 to 16 million, and each year after, it's about 8 to 9 million dollars a year.
However, we're not really seeing it in your budget because, um, or at least I can't see, I didn't get to really go through the budget, but. But when I'm looking at the bottom line of budget, it's actually going up by 9 million. So I guess I'm trying to understand that.
Well, you'll go through the budget in the coming weeks as we normally do. Uh, as you may recall, last year we made a number of adjustments because we're in the pandemic. Um, so those areas that we would have to raise normally, uh, this year we wouldn't have to raise as much. The budget goes up every year. Uh, there's no question about that. Prices go up every year, contracts and so forth, but this allows us, um, to do more and to.
So it allows us to spend more. Okay. Thank you.
I'm sorry?
Thank you.
It, in the end, at the end of the day, um, this is a major savings for the city to do business. And, um, if you look at where we stand across the Commonwealth, one with bond ratings, two with where we have excess levy capacity. There's only about three communities, maybe four, that have greater excess levy capacity, meaning we don't tax to the max. So. Um, I think this is a very responsible thing for us to look at, and if we, if we didn't do this. Uh, obviously, July for us would be looking at a much bigger appropriation. I'm sorry, I'm boring you there.
No, I'm not, I'm not, it's not that. I, I thought I was gonna sneeze, actually. I'm so sorry. So. Thanks, I appreciate it.
I'll stop there because I know during, during the committee meetings, we'd be happy to get into more detail. We're prepared to do that.
Um, there was, there was one other question that I did have, and that was, um, you know, we did have a mid-year cut. Last year, which brought our budget down from the fiscal year 2020 budget that we, we approved of 3, $340 million down to $337 million. Um, why did you use the $340 million if we did the mid-year cut that, that we ended up spending for your, for your percentage, just out of curiosity, for your 1.9?
The comparison's way back to the regular full budget.
Okay, even though we had a $2 million cut?
Yeah, we made the adjust, we made the adjustments during the year we felt we had to make. Uh, to get through the difficulties or the challenges. We weren't really sure where we would be, uh, by the end of the fiscal year. So. I think we made the right moves. We didn't get too carried away. We didn't lay off and add to the burden of the economy. Uh, and, uh, I think the department has done a remarkable job, uh, keeping, uh, keeping within their budgets and still delivering services.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counsel McCarthy, I saw that you had your hand raised.
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, Mayor. Um, just a few comments, um. I thought you had a great year, uh, in regards to the team, uh, how you folks adjust, uh, all the time, uh, amazes me. When COVID, uh, broke out, um. Your team gets together with you and, um, you guys march right down the field, and we accomplished, uh, so much this year, as, um. My colleague, uh, Counsel Palmoche said it, um, you know, it was a year of, uh. Of other places that were shutting down immediately, and, um. You folks did a great job. I hope the people in Quincy realize that the services went on, the work went on. Um, both privately and publicly, uh, you made the safety adjustments, as everybody's saying. Saying we're hopefully, knock on wood, uh, coming to the end, uh, where things can get back to normal, but, uh. Uh, for a tough year, uh, it's amazing what Quincy did. Resiliency is, um, really, uh, the word for the administration. Um. I know you know your staff, and, and I know your staff very well, and, um, they all, um, seem to step up. And no one steps back, uh, and they go right into it, uh, regardless what the situation is. And this was a, a tremendous, uh. Year on the negative side in regards to the pandemic, but, um, a truly solid year, uh, in regards to Quincy with the way you're moving things forward. Um. And keeping things, uh, even keeled. Um, and Mrs. Mahoney was asking about the 475. I will, uh, probably, uh, before the end of the week, have a date for that finance meeting to discuss that. And also, um, I'll have dates for the budget, uh, in the next few weeks after I talk to Mr. Walker a little bit. And Mrs. Mahoney, you can call that guy Mr. Mason about that 475 million. I bother him a lot. He's pretty good with the numbers if you have any issues. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other, many times, thanks, Dave. If we could, I'm just gonna leave it in order of comments that, that, uh, colleagues have. So any other questions or comments? On the budget presentation? Counsel DeBona? And if we could to, just can all of our comments just be related specifically to the budget and not towards one another? Thank you. Counselor?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Mayor, for coming in tonight, um, via Zoom, um, we've been doing all our meetings on here. But anyways, you know, I just, looking back on. This will be my sixth year going through the budget, sixth year on the council. And since I've been on here, I've, um, never encountered as big as, uh, asks for bondings, um. In a time period than this year. Over the last two months, I've obviously seen a lot of bond appropriations and, um. Um, the Public Safety Headquarters is a slam dunk. I didn't get any pushback on that, um, at all. The roads and the sidewalks, $100 million. A lot of people in general about the bonding and the appropriations of funding. Um. My concern as well as the, the city and the, and the residents and the citizens is, um, how are we looking on our long-term debt? How are we looking on our short-term debt? Um, and will the tax, will, will, will be some tax relief this year? Do you have, um, I guess my first question, then my second question is, um, what do you anticipate for a possible tax increase this year for, um, the budget? Well, uh, you anticipate it for, obviously, we gotta do the, um, in December, where we do the, um, the tax classification, but what do you anticipate?
Well, first of all, you, you mentioned though the, um, bonding that we're doing, uh, and you did, uh, you did highlight some of the great projects that we are doing. Response to the need out there, uh, and again, we're taking advantage of some historically low interest rates, so the borrowing of money is cheap. Uh, we are an old city. As you all know, we've tackled a lot of infrastructure issues. Some aren't so sexy. You don't see the soil lines and the water lines underground. You certainly see the seawall work. You certainly see the new school work. You certainly see the new playground work. Um, so incredible work has been done in the city for the residents of the city for their quality of life, again, working together between the city council and the administration. Uh, each and every year when we build the budget, we, uh, and it's, it, it is, I'll, I'll admit, on the municipal largeness, a little backwards, we, we build a budget, and then. A few months later, we then figure out how we're gonna pay for that budget, but that's, that's how it operates. Uh, I mentioned, uh, to Counsel Mahoney there, we have one of the highest excess levy capacities, uh, in the Commonwealth. I was just reading the ledger tonight, and I was seeing that. The town of Hanson just did an override for operational, an override, they're gonna pay an extra $460 per household just for their operational budget. Uh, Somerville a couple of years ago did an override for a high school project. Most of the communities around us are at the levy limit. Uh, we've got some 30-some-odd million dollars in excess levy capacity, so we're not taxing, uh, people at home, uh, that amount of money. So, you know, we're on our fourth school. We'll be talking about school, Squanum School, where many, most, many communities have to have Prop 2 and a half overrides to do these things. We're not doing that because we are being responsible fiscally, uh, and, and I think that's, that's terrific. Uh, having said that, every city in town, just about every city in town goes up every year on the taxes. The main. Driver for revenue for cities and towns is the property tax. It's the biggest chunk. I mentioned state aid earlier, and we talked a little bit about local receipts. But the main driver is property taxes, and, uh, you know, the costs of things don't go down, they do go up each year. So. I would say that going into the fall, it'd be a, it'd be a slight to a modest increase. We certainly wouldn't be going anywhere near as the levy limit. But if, again, we're coming out of this pandemic, we, you know, we're backfilling with some of the federal money, we, you know, things are looking good, but. You know, we just don't know at this point. Uh, so that's the best estimate I could give you right now.
I, I thank you for bringing in the Public Safety Headquarters and the $100 million for the roads and sidewalks, because that $220 million is gonna go to good use. And not one person, not one person gave me any brushback on those two votes. So, um, I, I commend you on it. I, I thank you for doing them. It's, it's much needed. Uh, for the city, because it, you know, people can use it, um, and, um, I'm looking forward to the discussion with the budget. But thank you, Mayor, for coming in. Thank you for coming from us. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Anybody else have any other questions or comments about the budget? Just flip back to Gallery View to make sure I don't miss anybody.
Counselor? Thank you. Um, some folks, um, so if I get off, uh, the budget, uh, a little bit, but, um, I want to just thank, um. I, I want to reiterate, um, um, Mayor, Mayor Koch, what you, you said about when you, you thanked your department heads. Um, you know, uh, I guess the ward councilors know exactly, um, exactly how much we need. Um, the assistance with, uh, with your department heads and, and all the way through. As you mentioned, from, uh, Mr. Walker, all the way down through, um, as a, as a ward counselor, especially here. In Squanum, but, and, and, and I have an order of what I wrote down is like during the pandemic, your, your folks. Were incredible. I mean, I, I, I had, I had folks in, in, um, uh, that, that, uh, worked for Manette and, uh, volunteered for Manette. Uh, that actually helped a ward counselor, and, and, and money wasn't a, a, an issue, uh, getting folks to and from. Uh, getting their shots, especially at the beginning, because it's, was the seniors, my, uh, seniors that reached out to us, and I'm sure the other ward counselors, uh. Um, actually experienced the same thing, trying to figure out how we want to handle that. Of course, there's, uh, no better thing than the roads. Uh, as, uh, Counsel DeBona mentioned, the roads and the, um. The roads and the infrastructure that is mentioned that is being worked on throughout, um, uh, our, our city is, is. You know, it's all, it's an old city and, uh, and especially, uh, uh, throughout North Quincy, uh. And, and Squanum and parts of Wallaston and Ward 6, um, it's being addressed and. Uh, something as well that I don't know, that it has to be mentioned in the, in your budget is, um. Your, uh, the, uh, Jay Dukas, uh, department, uh, this council passed, uh, a. Um, laws, uh, and especially in Ward 6, I'm really dealing with a lot of Airbnbs, uh, uh. Zerbo, uh, folks, and the fact that when I'm, I'm working with Jay Duka. Um, I, I can at least tell my folks that, uh, we introduced new, um. New technology in order to be able to identify these folks who are just trying to, um, take resident A, uh, property. And that resident A property is our number one, uh, number one, uh, property tax source. Is resident A as far as the, um, the voters of the, the local voters, the people who live in our, uh, uh, communities. And, and the fact that we are attacking and having a dedicated city solicitor, uh, assistant city solicitor. Be able to help us with what this body voted on and got through, and with your support. Is very important, and that, that I know is part of this budget. So I'm not speaking out of turn about. How the money that's being, um, funneled through is gonna support the, the resident A folks. And not only Ward 6, but across the whole city is incredible. And I think once that gets out. Um, it hasn't been, it hasn't been advertised or anything, because you know what? Again, we're coming out of a pandemic, and it's. I, I think that that is one of the most important thing, was one of the most important, um, you know, that, uh, and it was spearheaded by Chuck Fallon. Uh, that came out of this body, and I am so, I was so excited because we have some issues in Ward 6. And the last thing you mentioned was, of course, uh, how we, uh, find other ways to get money. And in Squanum School, of course, 100 years old. You just have, you, you know, you just have to go and, and see, uh, uh, what is needed. We need to step it up when it comes to. Uh, our, our, uh, children and finding other resources through the state, through, uh, that, uh, through, through the programs that you folks did. Especially, uh, uh, with the different other schools that were there, and I know that I appreciate. Everything you, you and your staff has done, uh, as far as I, I'm concerned. And moving forward, um, I, I, I hope to, we all can work together professionally. Uh, and not take anything too personal and, uh, and just, uh, just do what, what is right for the people that we represent. And, and I, I believe, uh, uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, I'm, I'm proud to say that Quincy is a, is a great city, and, and, and it's. So much different from when I moved in, uh, uh, 23, 24, 25 years ago, and my parents moved in, uh, long before that, and we had relatives here, so. Thank you, and I'm sorry for my long-windedness. Thank you.
Not at all, Counselor. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other questions or comments on the budget? All right, so we do have a motion to move this into Finance Committee. Do we have a second?
Sorry?
My Counselor Phelan, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so we'll go ahead and move it into Finance Committee. Thank you so much. And Mayor, thank you so much again, uh, for your time this evening. I appreciate you, as always, coming and, and spending your time with us. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mayor. Can I, um, Mr. Assistant Clerk, next item on the agenda, please?
2021-050 appropriation fiscal 2022 saw enterprise budget.
Motion to move into Finance.
Motion to move to Finance Committee. Do we have a second?
Second.
And my Counselor Phelan, any questions or comments on this item? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so we'll move this to Finance. Next item on the agenda, please.
Next item on the agenda is 2021-051 appropriation fiscal 2022 water enterprise budget.
Motion to move into Finance.
We have a motion to move to Finance Committee. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, my Counselor Phelan, any questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So we'll move this to Finance Committee. Number four, please.
Number four is 2021-052 appropriation nine millionth purchase of the Adams Academy, Eight Adams Streets, Adams Street, 24 Adams Street and 26 Adams Street for historic preservation purposes.
Motion to move into Finance.
Motion to move to Finance Committee. Do we have a second?
Second.
And my Counselor Phelan, any questions or comments on this item? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we'll move this to Finance Committee. Number five, please, Mr. Assistant Clerk.
Number five is 2021-053 land order of taking Adams Academy and adjacent properties.
Motion to move to Finance.
Here we have a motion to move to Finance. Motion to move to Ordinance. Motion to move to Ordinance as well. Have a second on, uh, both of these, actually?
Second.
Okay, second, Counsel Harris. Move to both Finance and Ordinance Committee. Any questions or comments on this item? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we'll move this to Finance and Ordinance Committee. Number six, please.
Number six is 2021-054 Ordinance Amendment to Municipal Code, Chapter 300, Article Two, Stormwater Management and Land Disturbance Ordinance.
Thank you. Motion to move into Ordinance. Motion to move to Ordinance. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, my Counselor Phelan, any questions or comments on this item? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so we'll move this to Ordinance Committee. Number seven, please.
Number seven is 2021-055 Ordinance Amendment of Zoning Code, Section 8.0, Special Districts, 8.1, Flood Plan Overlay District.
Motion to move into Ordinance. Motion to move to Ordinance Committee. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, my Counselor Phelan, any questions or comments on this item? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so we'll move this to Ordinance. Number eight, please, Mr. Assistant Clerk.
Number eight, 2021-056 Order Dedication of Intersection of Sonoma Road and Essex Street in Memorial of Daniel.
Counsel Harris, I'd like to recognize.
Uh, motion to waive the reading and, um, if I, uh, thank you. Uh, I'd like to speak to this, um, uh, the next, especially the next two, uh, ordinances. Um, and, um, I'd also like to thank my, uh, colleague, uh, Counsel Debona, who was with me, um, who was with me at the Quincy Veterans Council meeting, uh, a few weeks ago, um, when I, I, uh, presented, uh, these two, um, uh, these two, uh, dedications. And of course, um, I'm going to start with, uh, Dan Dewey, two vet, two veterans that, Dan, we, we lost, uh, Dan to, uh, COVID, um, yeah, um, whereas, uh, Dan, uh, he was in, he was a Marine Corps. He was in the Marine Corps in 1968, uh, achieving the rank of Sergeant while serving the Vietnam conflict. And honorably, he was honorably discharged after being disabled in combat. Um, Dan was a graduate of Texas A&amp;M and Anne Marie, uh, and Anne Marie College, uh, with multiple master's degrees. Uh, Dan worked many years, uh, as a probation officer. He was appointed to the Commonwealth's, uh, Parole Board by Governor Bill Weld in 1983, 1993. Uh, Dan served multiple terms, uh, as Commod- Commodant of the, uh, the William R. Catty, uh, Marine, uh, Corps League and was involved in the Veterans Council for many years. And, um, Dan, uh, I'm gonna, I'll finish this out and then give my comments, because these, this is important. Dan was the loving husband for 39 years, uh, to his wife Kathy and was a devoted father to Daniel and Elaine, uh, and was a proud grand, grandfather to Lily, uh, Colin and Daniel. Um, so the corner of Sonoma Road and Essex Street and Daniel, and, uh, will be named and Daniel's, uh, beloved Squanum neighborhood shall forever be known as Daniel Dewey Square. And I hope that folks would, um, uh, would, would support me, uh, on the, uh, the motion to approve tonight. Um, my predecessor, uh, Brian McNamee, and I, I don't mention him very often. Uh, they were, they were very close friends. And I think that, uh, if there's one time that, that, uh, my predecessor would be smiling at me, would be, uh, doing this, uh, I can remember going, uh, uh, a little over, a little over, uh, buddy, a little over a year ago, um, when we all met and the, uh, Veterans, uh, Council, um, uh, gave a tribute to him when he passed from, from what I understand is, is from COVID. And, uh, and, uh, he was, he was a person of, uh, great, uh, character, great opinion. He was, he was dedicated to our veterans. Uh, and he was just, uh, um, really, really, uh, uh, a nice, a nice guy to sit next to. And he would remind me about Brian McNamee too. And, uh, but, um, he was, he, he, he was really, really, he, this honor is truly, uh, worthy of Dan Dewey. So I asked that my colleagues, somebody would second the motion and if we could.
Second the motion.
Pass it. Thank you, my friend, uh, Counsel Debona.
Thank you, Counsel Harris. So we have a motion to approve, um, agenda item number, let's see, number eight here. And then we have a second by Counsel Debona. But do we have any questions or comments on this item before we move to? Counsel Debona, please.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, thank you, Counsel Harris, for bringing this about. Um, Dan Dewey was a, was a friend of mine and right before the COVID had hit, we just had breakfast at Early American and he got COVID and he, um, he passed away. It was sad. And I want to thank the Counselor and, um, other folks from Squanum. We had the ceremony dedication outside there after he passed away, um, on the corner of Sonoma and Essex. And, um, it's very sad. It was the beginning stages of, of COVID and we're all starting to wear those masks. And, um, I just want to thank Counselor, um, Harris for bringing this about. Um, it's a great deed and, um, I want to thank the family, Kathy and, um, and the, and the children and the grandchildren. So, um, thank you, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other questions on this item before we move to vote? Okay, seeing none. Mr. Assistant Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Counsel and Geronico.
Yes.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Debona.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Palmucci.
Yes.
Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
President Liang.
Yes. Okay, I'm, next item on the agenda, please.
Next item on the agenda is an order, uh, dedication of intersection of Standish Road and Bellevue Road in memory of Jonathan O'Driscoll. That is 2021-057.
I'd like to waive the, waive the rating and if I could, uh, uh, speak on the motion.
Please.
Thank you again, and thank you, thank my, uh, colleagues for their indulgence. Um, Jonathan O'Driscoll, uh, oh my God, uh, somebody whose life was, uh, he left us too soon. Um, he was born in 1985, April 24th. Uh, he graduated from North Quincy High School, uh, in 2004. Uh, he was skilled and dedicated copnder after his graduation. And he actually worked with his father and I actually, uh, uh, we know, um, my family knows, knows the family. But, but not only does my family know the family, but everybody knows the family and, 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 and our community. And, uh, and, uh, Jonathan, Jonathan served our country. He enlisted in the United States Marine Corps in 2009 and was a decorated Marine, uh, achieving the rank of Corporal. Uh, Jonathan, Jonathan was a proud, loyal and brave Quincy firefighter, uh, serving on ladder two in Wallaston for six years. Uh, Jonathan was the loving husband of Allison, the devoted father of Nolan. Um, so, uh, so therefore I, I'm hoping that it would be ordained that the corner of Standish and Bellevue and Jonathan's, um, beloved Squanum neighborhood shall forever be known as the Jonathan O'Driscoll Square. And again, as I had mentioned, um, you know, he had, he had, he had a young child and a very, less than a year, a year old. And, um, and I can remember my wife telling me the story, because we were, we were friends and he was so happy that he was able to move back into Squanum, uh, became a firefighter, moved back into Squanum, uh, where he grew up. And, uh, he bought a house on Aberdeen Road and he yelled to my wife, hey Carol, uh, uh, we just bought a house, we're back. And, and it was just, he was just, what you just heard me say was how he was when he was in the room. He lit up the room. He was a real great kid that just, unfortunately, uh, things, things happen. And so, um, I, I, I hope that my, uh, colleagues again will, uh, support me with, uh, motion to approve this, um, this, um, this, um, ordinance. Thank you so much.
I'd like this to second it if I could.
Sure, Counsel Debona. So we have a motion to approve by Counsel Harris. Second by Counsel Debona. Does anybody have any questions or comments on this item before we move to vote? Counsel Debona, please.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Thank you again, Counsel Harris, for bringing this in. And, um, you were talking about them coming back to Squanum. And then I was, um, walking the neighborhood one day and I ran into his wife Allison and she says, we just, we just bought a house, we're back in Squanum. And it was two months prior to Jonathan passing. And it's kind of, it's a very sad situation, um, with a young child, Nolan. And, you know, being a veteran, being the Marines and also being a firefighter for the city. He had a great personality, uh, Mr. Jonathan O'Driscoll had a great personality. Um, I used to see him all the time. He had a smile on his face. So it's very sad and I'm happy to see that, um, Counsel Harris bringing this, um, over to, um, Standish and Bellevue. So, um, I'd like to offer second it and I want to thank you. Um, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, uh, thank you, uh, Counsel Debona, for your support.
Thank you both. I did, does anybody else have any other questions or comments on this item? Okay, seeing none. Mr. Assistant Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Counsel and Geronico.
Yes.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Debona.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Palmucci.
Yes.
Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
President Liang.
Yes.
Nine minutes.
All right, item passes. Thank you, Counsel Harris.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, folks.
Uh, item number 10, 2021-058, it's a gift $200 from Mary Cox for the, uh, Quincy Animal Shelter, Food for Animals.
Thank you so much.
Motion to approve and send a letter of thanks.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
My Counsel Phelan, any questions or comments on this item? Okay, seeing none. Mr. Assistant Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Counsel and Geronico.
Yes.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Debona.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney. Counsel Mahoney. Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Palmucci.
Yes.
Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
President Liang.
Yes, and I just want to make sure we log Counsel Mahoney's vote. Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
Nine minutes, thank you.
Item passes. Okay, so we're moving on to the approval of previous meeting minutes from May 3rd. Uh, could I have a motion to approve, please?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Counsel McCarthy. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Counsel Harris, any questions or comments on the meeting minutes? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so the meeting minutes are accepted. Communications and reports from the mayor, other city officers and city board. Mr. Assistant Clerk, please.
I have, uh, two, uh, communications to grant to locations. I have a grant to location, uh, for Forbes Hill, uh, replace relocate P4 Forbes Hill Road, approximately five foot northwest of existing locations due to private expansion.
Thank you so much. Any other reports?
One other communication. Uh, President Liang, it's a utility for grant to location. It is at, to install a four-inch conduit from pole number 10 at the corner of Franklin Street and Water Street to a new handhold to be located approximately 73 linear feet west of pole number 10. The conduit and handhold are required to provide communications, uh, service to, uh, extended systems built for cell service.
Thank you so much. Any other?
That is all the communications I have.
Thank you. So we'll go into Public Works. Our next item on the agenda is unfinished business and proceeding meetings. All right, seeing none of reports of committees. Counselor Harris.
Uh, thank, thank you. Um, uh, earlier this evening, um, there was a public hearing held, um, uh, for Counsel Order, uh, 2021-JOSH46 Utility Grant Location Mass Electric Quarry Street. Positive record, recommendation for the pub, from the Public Works Committee. Motion to approve.
Thank you. I have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, my Counsel McCarthy, any questions or comments on this item? Uh, Mr. Assistant Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Uh, Counsel and Geronico.
Yes.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Debona.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Palmucci.
No.
Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
President Liang.
Yes.
Eight members.
Okay, item passes. Next item, Counsel Harris.
Yes, uh, public hearing was held, uh, uh, 2021-47 granted location, Mass Electric, uh, McConville Way and Parkway. A positive recommendation from the Public Works Department.
We have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
And my Counsel McCarthy, any questions or comments on this item? Okay, Mr. Assistant Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Counsel and Geronico.
Yes.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Debona.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
Yes.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Palmucci.
No.
Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
President Liang.
Yes.
Eight members.
Okay, item passes.
And so then there was a public hear, a public hearing this evening, uh, 2014-48 Utility Grant Location Mass Electric Verizon 202 Coquelin Street. Positive recommendation from the Public Works Committee. Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, my Counsel McCarthy, any questions or comments on this item? Okay, Mr. Assistant Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Counsel and Geronico.
Yes.
Counsel Kane.
Yes.
Counsel Debona.
Yes.
Counsel Harris.
Yes.
Counsel Mahoney.
No.
Counsel McCarthy.
Yes.
Counsel Palmucci.
Spreading. No.
Counsel Phelan.
Yes.
President Liang.
Yeah.
Seven. Thank you. That's it from Counsel Harris, all right?